...be done prior to this so that while your petition would only be for that 9.1 acres.
I do need the exit bill, so I don't have that control of change. I'm only fine with the rules.
Okay, I know I'm over, but one more comment and I can tell you every single person in this room is concerned about it. We're concerned about a bait and switch. That we're gonna change everything.
All right, this is basically to the bus company.
What's your name and address, please?
Pat Mitchell, 10-year-old place. I've been here since 1983, and I commute from here to the city a lot of times, all over the place. I've been in the insurance industry since 1974. So based upon this one-person corporation, how long has your corporation been in that name? How many years?
When we expanded up into Hudson Valley, we opened up the corporation in 2017.
Okay, from 2017 before with the other school districts, how many corporations were you under as one person?
I would say close to three. We have an operation in New Jersey, we have an operation in Monalee, and we have an operation there in Hudson Valley.
Okay, based upon those corporations, why are you not using the same corporation name for this particular area?
There are different labor agreements and labor unions based on the environment and the location that we're at, so we put those in so we don't have cross contamination of labor agreements.
Okay, so you're mentioning labor agreements. Now, if you are gonna have bus drivers coming here, what's to say you're gonna try to take away Washingtonville bus drivers with different benefits?
Well, if you're looking at the benefits, if you work for the school district, you get more benefits than I can offer. The only difference that a driver comes to me is because we offer more money per hour, and we give that driver more hours instead of school district.
And do non-compete's come in to play with you?
Do non-compete's?
Yeah, one bus driving company to another.
We compete, and this is, I think, is more of a question for the property, not about non-compete's between bus companies and school districts.
Well, sure, you just brought up a labor, so it would be labor. So let's go into it.
I know I'm the lawyer, he's gonna, you know, say all...
We're talking about...
But, Mr. Mayor, this is way beyond a site plan application involving nine acres for a bus. Really isn't it?
We have issues here, we started with the school's corporation.
Right, but you're asking back-and-forth questions with an applicant who has barely gotten to the process here about the corporate structure.
Looking for a backup in the company.
Absolutely, because this has to do with the insurance. Now, we talked about 4,000 gallons of diesel, okay? That's a catastrophe situation when it blows up. And then we have lawsuits in the village because we also will be victims of these situations, the catastrophes. This is the catastrophic risk.
If you look at your school district bus yard, you have fuel tanks above ground in the school district.
Ah, yes, but in the history, if you looked at things and did your homework, you would see that they do have blowups, and they're usually not in the town.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, thank you.
Erica Cubman, K U T M A N N, to Woodcock Mountain Road. So I get to look at this. That property, I've been here since 1992, was farmland. I really see no reason to move it away from farmland. It is zoned for residential, single-family, and they have the right to do that. I have a hard time with the proposition for the 88.5 going to a different zoning. And regardless if you want 9.1 or the full 88, that doesn't matter. One of the most important things that this village should have is a master plan. What are we proposing to do with this land? What is our future looking like? How are we mitigating the traffic, the noise, the pollution, the wet lands that we are going to be taking away if we ever change the 88? Because that's the area that floods. And without the ground absorbing that water and putting in all this hard pavement, and I'm sure you know that you have to do storm water pollution prevention after the fact for the construction and mitigate all that, but all that hard surface that is there becomes runoff that has to be dealt with. And when it's not dealt with properly, the flooding you've had in the past, and Irene and Sandy weren't that long ago, it's going to be that much worse. When I first moved up here, you hardly saw the flooding. The next 10 years it increased, 10 years more after that, it's even worse. You could run a rowboat through the center of town with six feet of water in it. This is a real concern, and we really have to be good stewards of the land and the property surrounding it and how we use that wisely. Is this the best place for a bus depot? I don't think so. One of the reasons I don't drive through town as I go down Woodcock Mountain Road is because I can't get through that light in the morning. We put all sorts of restrictions on the schools. You can only make a right-hand turn in, you can only go down back through Porton to get around, to drop off your kid or whatever. It is all done because we have too much traffic already. Now, throw in a lot more buses, down 208, where you have a nice peak in the road and you can't really see, put a 16-year-old kid driving to school and crash into a school bus, that one. We're asking for more disasters to happen if we don't really think about how this affects... And I know it's not in their interest to do a traffic study before they buy the property. I get that, but someone really needs to do that. So you know how this land can be used and put the property on.
Thank you.
Donna Jacaruso, 39 Woodfield Drive, J A C A R U S O. Thank you for bringing up the master plan. I'm not here to discuss Orange County Transit.
No, this is Orange County Transit, thank you.
I'm not here to discuss Orange County Transit. I'm here to address the board. The last person just brought up the master plan, let's talk about it.
We're talking about Orange County Transit, thank you.
We're talking about a comprehensive plan and then why we're in this position and why we're here in the first place. The reason we should be here tonight is to discuss what is our vision for that space, not Orange County Transit. The last comprehensive plan was done in 95. It's recommended that it's updated every five years.
But tonight is, we're listening to the applicant of Orange County Transit.
And I listened to the applicant. Can I finish?
Not if you're asking about the master plan, that's not what we're discussing tonight.
Okay, I'm bringing up...
It's called a public meeting.
I'm bringing up...
About Orange County Transit. About Orange County Transit.
About the zoning, we're talking about the zoning. I'll talk about the zoning. 95 was the last time it was done. There was a revision attempt in 18. It should be done every five to 10 years, look at. Back in 95, I don't think the residents' vision for the Village of Washingtonville was a private school bus garage. All right, that said, Joe, you had met with, they had a planning and design recently. Are we using them? You were consulting with them to update our comprehensive. Are we moving forward with that?
Just taking new kind of thing.
Okay. Well... Mayor?
I only have three minutes. Yeah, 45 seconds.
Here, I'll leave it here. That is a petition... That is a petition for a building moratorium that we would like in place as of now. I am asking that you want your board members... Make a resolution, please, to accept this. Somebody?
Thank you for your time.
Jenny? Larissa?
We haven't read it.
We haven't read it.
Okay, well, it's for a building moratorium for a minimum of six months or until a new comprehensive plan is in place and our zoning is updated.
Thank you.
Oh, come on. That wasn't three minutes.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question? Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. It's rude. I understand it's a time limit, but I've been listening to you, you're very condescending, and you're very rude, and you should be...
Yeah, we do, we do. You know, when we come to a...
I have to respond.
You don't have enough time to respond!
What we wanted to...
Can I please finish my thought?
What we were asked to do was to come to a big event, in this case, the middle school. The school district was happy to have us here, okay? This is the beginning of a conversation, not for people to get off on whenever they feel like they need to talk about.
Why not?
No, no, no. It is a conversation.
That's what it is about.
That's not what the meeting was.
The meeting is talking about rezoning, and I'm talking about zoning. And let's talk about zoning.
Look, I'm not gonna get into this, but you want us...
Right, because you don't wanna hear what we need to say.
No, that thing would be that we wanna knock down the middle school, and you want us to vote on it tonight. Really?
Okay, that's fine. Then look at it, but can I finish my thought?
No.
No. No, you finish.
We have...
The next question.
Does somebody wanna read this for me, who didn't speak?
No, you're not chairing, I understand you though. Okay?
We have...
What we'll do is just end the meeting then, that's all I can say. All right? So does anybody have any other questions?
It's the ECO, this was the biggest part of what I wanted to say. Why do we keep stepping over our zoning, our 175-2 that protects the residents? Here.
Yeah, I don't even know if I'm gonna act second to you. Tom Devance, 07th April Court. I gotta say for 15 seconds worth of my time, this is the biggest joke I've ever seen. This board...
Thank you.
Anytime, Joe. You are so welcome to the podium and imagine sitting in this audience.
Thank you.
People voted you guys in, they give us, and they give you three minutes to talk. Give it a break.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Next question.
So the real issue is, as already discussed, the reason we are here and the reason we're talking about the zoning is because you wanna change the zone. Out of the blue, somebody comes in, let's make it BG. Was it, if it was a guy who wanted industrial, would you make it industrial? We don't have a plan. We need the moratorium, we need to do the comp plan, we need committees to be put together by the residents and other boards to come up with an overall master plan. For five years, you crap did nothing but sit there and placate us. Done. Done.
Good evening, guys. My name is David Schuyler, S C H Y L E R. For the bus depot, what tax incentive are they giving you? They gotta be giving you something. What percentage?
This is a commercial property, we're not seeking any taxes.
Okay, well, 6,900 square feet would probably only hold about four or five buses. That's what you plan on building, right?
The building is for maintenance, not to store the buses inside.
No, it's for the maintenance only, and all the buses will be stored outside, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, if you look at that blueprint of that building, once you get that 9.1 acres, you will accumulate the other 88,000 acres, and that's a given fact. And the mayor is in your pocket, or the other way around.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you.
I'm not, I'm not done. You should be privately, privately looked at because...
Thank you.
Okay, I got one more question for the bus depot. Do you subcontract yourself out to other municipalities and other religious organizations?
We don't subcontract.
Can I have the address, please?
193 Woodcock Mountain Road. You're welcome to come by my door anytime.
No, I just want the address, thank you, though. Thank you for your interest.
So my question to the guys in the bus depot... So you don't subcontract yourselves out to any other religious groups? Because that's a public record.
We're not gonna answer any questions.
There you go, people. Once they do that, you know what's gonna happen. Trust me.
Thank you.
I only report, we don't subcontract out. We provide transportation for the school district.
All school districts.
All the school districts that are contracted, yes. So...
That's your answer? I'm telling you.
He has no choice.
You're a brown and black man, call a white line.
Elections in March.
Good evening, my name is Angela Leonardo, LA 21, Chiu Boni Road, and I have been a resident of this area since 1987. Like everyone else in this building, we moved here to bring our families here, to raise them in a clean and wonderful environment. And for the last 35 years, I have been proud to call this my community and the way it looked and the way it felt, and that's how we all want to keep it. So I know you're getting frustrated with some of these questions and remarks, but you have to realize that we raised our children here, and now I'm raising my grandchildren here, and we're seeing changes to this community that is bothering all of us, and you know what I'm talking about. So when you give him nine acres and you rezone that whole 88, how will you stop others from coming in and asking for that property and have buildings as being built at the end of 208? How do we stop that from coming here? I'm sorry, I understand what you do as a bus company is a wonderful thing. I own a preschool daycare, and I see the buses, and I also provide services for children with special needs, so I understand what you do is very important, just not here.
Any more questions? If you did not want to speak publicly tonight, if you have your questions on the index cards, please hand them to us. She's gonna win.
Hello, my name is Rachel Venedetto. I'm number 2816 Route 94 in Washingtonville. The question before you is so very simple. You only have to say no, and you just have to go away. Please. Please.
Steven Denblaker, D E N B L E Y A E R, 9 Waterford Circle. So you guys have 55 buses running for Washingtonville Central School District right now, right? How many of those buses pick up at what I would consider the five main schools? The high school, the middle school, Taft, Round Hill, and I'm having a rain park, let's go. Little Brit.
We do the added district, so we pick up at the doorstop.
Thank you.
My name is Terry Dunn, last name is D U N N. I live in Weatherford Drive. I've been a lifelong resident of this village. Born in 1960, raised in this village, gone to Taft, here at middle school, and graduated in '79 at the high school. In my growing up years, this village has now become such a cesspool because of all the changes, because someone comes in, they want what they want, little money talks, character walks. I am tired of 6 o'clock in the morning needing to go to work, and I am stuck. I am stuck in traffic to get out of traffic, 6 o'clock in the morning from Airpoint onto 94. Then coming home from work from downtown, I'm either stuck all the way up by the CYO building, or I'm stuck all the way out by Kitchen Park and beyond because of the traffic and the bus traffic. You wanna add another bus garage? No!
Any other questions? Comments? Okay? Would you come up? You could come up?
The gentleman with the bus garage, he said to one of the other ladies that, about the air quality, that he uses buses that use propane. If that's the case, why do we need 4,000 gallons of diesel and 4,000 gallons of gas?
The entire fleet is not propane, it's a phase in.
When would that be?
Well, if they change the phase in period to electric, then we have to phase it.
Not electric to propane. When is your fleet gonna be fully propane?
It will not ever be 100% propane.
So then...
Eventually propane will be out and electric will be in, and we have to phase it electric.
So then, do you have, how many of your fleet is propane now?
We have...
Of the 150 or 34, how many are on pass propane? Or did you mislead that family?
We didn't mislead it. In my whole fleet, I have 100 propane buses. Out of the 100 propane buses, we use 15s in the Washingtonville School District.
Of the 55?
Of the 55.
Okay, so that's what? 18%? No, about 30%?
Well, it depends on if we buy one next year or if we start buying electric.
Nah, it doesn't depend, it's a percentage.
We're here to have an application.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
You are.
My name's Mike Resziano, lived here since 1960.
Yeah, I do, sir.
3 Lark Street, Washingtonville. I just wanna say a few things. Most everybody's concerned, a number of things, but particularly the traffic in the village. Obviously, we can't afford any more traffic, whether it's commercial traffic or just residential traffic. What's acceptable to be at a traffic light, to try to get through from, say, the high school to the, I think, 10, 15 minutes? It's really unacceptable. It's just, it's just way too much. We don't need more buses and stuff. Even as far as, like, you think about the village businesses, like down on Depot Street, you got Hennessy's, you got Newport Beverage, you got the restaurant over there. They're gonna be affected by this as well. People are not gonna wanna be in those traffic jams. You're gonna get, like, three buses from the traffic light to Depot Street, and people are not gonna really wanna shop there. They will be impacted by this, I'm sure. What happens with all the schools during dismissal times? They're gonna be stuck in traffic, students will be affected by it, parents and the schools themselves will be affected by all these delays that are gonna be created. What happens when Maze Field has their games and stuff? People try to get at that area. It's just not gonna work. And lastly, public safety. You think about it, if the fire department, ambulances, or anybody has to get through there, it's not a safe place to try to go around all that traffic over by Ralph's Motor Repair and get through there if they're coming safe from Monroe. It's not a safe situation. So I think this proposal should be next. Thank you.
Donna Jacaruso, 39 Woodfield Drive, J A C A R U S O. What I was saying earlier before I cut off, our village code, 175-2, is as much of a code as any other code in our zoning. And that is the code that protects us as residents, and it protects you as a board as well. And I'm not gonna read it all, I will paraphrase, but I'm tired of every meeting, we keep stepping over this code. 175-2, make it no, because this is what protects us. This property isn't bought yet. It doesn't have to be rezoned to accommodate a developer that is of no benefit to its residents. So, 175-2A, I'm paraphrasing, to regulate orderly growth in accordance with a comprehensive plan for long-term objectives deemed beneficial to the interests and welfare of the people. B, to protect the established character and social economic well-being of private and public property. C, to promote in the public interest the utilization of land for which it's most appropriate. D, to secure the safety, et cetera. E, to prevent overcrowding. F, to lessen and prevent traffic congestion. G, to conserve the value of buildings and enhance the value of land. All right? Enforcing those codes, it's not just your right, it's your obligation when you took the oath of office. It should come as a priority, not put on backwards.
Any other questions? Okay, a few closing remarks. Those of you who live in the Village of Washingtonville, we have something in the local paper, we also have something online. We have open positions on both the planning board as well as the zoning board of appeals. We welcome your interest to either one of those boards. Some people have, thank you very much. Thank you. The Journal? Yeah, Orange, the Journal? Is that local? Okay. It's in the paper.
The Courier-Journal.
Everybody's not online, so everybody, senior people, a lot of them only have their computers, so look it online, just now.
No, it's also online, but it's also with the paper. The paper that comes out and leaving, is it the Courier-Journal?
Yeah, it's not the official publication of the village.
Okay. All right, so we welcome your comments. We welcome to just submit a line that you're interested in being a member of either the planning board or zoning board. Right now, like I said, we have a few openings. We have a board of five, we could also extend that to a board of seven if need be, if the outright, if village residents. If village residents are not, we don't receive enough interest from the village residents through the attorney, we then would have to go to the town.
Why would you drive your socks downstream? Why?
I don't know what that means, but there you go. So it's two nights, it's two nights a month, really, with the planning board, the zoning board comes up and everything, there's applications. Okay? I'm sorry?
I don't think you're talking about the...
Those people are planning board, zoning board, or...
Those people on the planning board and the zoning board are afforded by the board.
Yes.
Those people are elected by the vote of people in the village. The planning board should be elected by the village, too.
You're hearing from the people now, and you represent...
And we'd love to see you on the planning and the zoning boards.
I'm too angry. I'm too angry. I don't know where this vision comes from, but my gosh.
It's just a conversation. It's not...
No, it's a conversation.
That's why we're having this conversation. We haven't voted on anything yet. We're just...
Nothing has happened in the village, and everyone is kind of pretty upset. I don't understand.
We legally have to hear every applicant. We can't say no.
No, you can say no just based on the E codes.
I'd like to give all my information before I make a decision.
Any... Thank you very much for attending the special meeting of the Village Board of Trustees. We have, my next scheduled work session is the first Monday of November, and it's the 7th. If you have any questions, please feel free to email us at any time, and we will answer your email and your comments. Good night, everyone. Thank you.